We happening?
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the April 2nd, 2013 regular meeting of the New Paltz Village Planning Board. My name is Maurice Whitehead, and I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. Our other members present this evening are Michael Zerler, Rich Stephens, Tom Rocco, and Liz Harshaw. Our secretary is Kelly Stengel, and the planner, director of planning is Kurt Lavala. The agenda this evening consists of two items. The last item is a mistake. We already adopted those meetings. So the first item is a continuation of the public hearing for the special use permit site plan application for change of use at 184 Main Street, PB 13001, and the applicant is Moxie Company. So, do we need a motion to reopen the public hearing? What's our motion to reopen?
I don't think we need a motion to reopen. We're not actually reopening it, it was held open.
Right, okay, okay. So, if there are members of the public who would like to speak about the merits of this application, I'd like to just reiterate one thing first, please. And that is that when we approve a special use permit or a site plan application, we are doing it for the land, for the use on that land. We're not doing it for the applicant, for the qualities of the applicant, for the deliciousness of the cupcakes, for the amount of good they are for the community or anything like that. We're doing it for that use on that land. And anything that we approve for that land can be used by another applicant coming in later that has, that does not have the same credentials. So we don't really consider at this point anything about those nice things that we all heard about two weeks ago. We're here to talk about the merits of the application, of this application for this land. So, anybody would like to speak to the merits of this application? Yes, sir?
Well, first of all, I wanted to start by thanking you guys. I know that being on that side of the table is not always the easiest thing to do.
It's very easy.
And I hear that the pay isn't so good as well, if I'm correct in saying that?
We got 100% raise.
But I did want to just start by saying, I hear what you say, and I wholeheartedly agree. But at the same time, I just hope that when looking at this application, you do to a degree think about the applicant itself as well. Because you just, I think it's important to see if what you're doing is also best for the community as a whole. And when we talk about this proposal, you have a local business owner who hires local people, uses local products. And it's pretty much everything that we look for in businesses in New Paltz. I've lived here long enough to know that, you know, we really pride ourselves in bringing in certain businesses. And in many ways, I do think this is one of the models, the type of businesses that we look to in New Paltz. So I completely understand why you guys are looking into it the way you are. But again, I just ask that you make sure that you kind of look for it from 30,000 feet off, is an expression that's often used, to make sure that if what you're doing really best suits the purpose of the board and the community as a whole.
For the record, would you like to state your name?
Sure.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I wasn't going to speak, I just pretty wanted to be here. But I guess I wanted to say that I'm grateful that I'm not trying to open this up in New Paltz because I am appalled and shocked at the insanity that's going on. And I really can't talk about any details other than I don't get it, and I really don't get it. And I'm reading papers, and I guess sort of to echo some of what Dan said, let's look at a little bit beyond whatever is wrong. Because you talked about the cupcakes being the good thing, and I'm not sure what the wrong thing is here as just a community member. And that's just, I'm speaking from my heart. I'm really glad I'm not opening up a store right here.
Thank you. Okay. Would you care to state your name for the question?
Kurt, please allow me to.
Okay. Anybody else I'd like to say? Okay. Do you have a motion to continue the public hearing?
Well, I continue or close the public hearing.
Yes. I'd like to, I would like, I don't understand why you're going to keep the public hearing open. And I'd like to request that you close the public hearing. And I'd also like to request that I get comments from the board, from those who would like to give me comments.
Well, if we close the public hearing, we are required to take action within a certain number of days.
Correct.
And without having all the information that we need to take that action, I don't want to close the public hearing.
If after you close the public hearing, then you can make that decision.
It locks us into something that I don't want to be locked into.
So you are just prolonging it so that you don't have to make a decision, so that you can continue to ignore my request to care about how much money I'm spending here. All I've asked you to do from the beginning, Mr. Whitehead, is to consider within your legal rights and use your discretionary abilities to say, okay, we don't need $1,600 more to look at this site plan. We don't need an engineer to look at this site plan because there's no engineering going on. You refuse to do that, and I don't understand it. It's within your legal abilities, it's within your discretionary abilities, and you keep saying it has nothing to do with the person, or the product, or the business. But it does, because you know me, and it is not illegal at all asking for any preferential treatment for you to make a call here and say, okay, we won't have to talk to the engineer again after spending $2,600 on an engineer with very little to no engineering in this site plan. That's all I've asked from you from the beginning. You've dismissed me, and you have not acknowledged my concern and my request to care about what I'm paying here.
Mrs. Ariel. The process according to our code, which we are charged to execute.
Your code allows for you to be, just to use your discretionary abilities.
Listen, seriously, if you ask me a question, I'm going to give you an answer, and I'd like to not be interrupted.
Sure.
Thank you. As of this moment, we have contracted with two consultants for work to evaluate your application. And as of today, the total amount that we have contracted for is $3,900. You have paid $3,000. You are in arrears for that for $900. We also said that if you could pay $1,600, and this goes back, I believe it is a month, when Kurt asked, is that about the date? I don't remember the exact date.
Correct.
I think it was about a month ago that we asked for the $1,600. That would cover the $900 that is owed for work that we've already contracted for. And another $700 that would be to evaluate the last application that you sent in and for the time that our attorney and engineer would be at the next meeting. There is provision in the, I'm sorry?
That's not correct. The $700 is for Clauzer's bill, for the engineer's bill. That's what you sent me, I have it in the mail right here. The other, the $900 is for what the lawyer has billed up until the last meeting that he was here. The additional $700 is for you asking the engineer if the five basic things that you asked him to put on the site plan are there. And I do not understand that. I've only asked for your, for your, for your, you know.
The provision in the memorandum of understanding that you signed.
Correct, that also allows him to.
Excuse me, please let me finish.
I've been waiting for you to answer things for three weeks, I'm tired of it. I'm really, I'm just really tired of this. I don't want to be here anymore. I just can't, I don't want to do it, I don't want to do this anymore. I feel like you guys just don't care at all. And I'm not saying the whole board, but you, sir, just do not care. You are not willing to engage me at all in this, you're not willing to work with me at all. Isn't that the thing where it's... I don't know, I'm just tired of it.
First of all, Mrs. Ariel, I, and I can speak for the rest of the members of the planning board with whom I've spoken about this, we want this application to go forward. We thought, we had prepared by our attorney resolutions for the approval of the special use permit and for the CEPR, but things came up during the meeting which made it not possible to do.
It was not possible to do.
We want.
I just didn't understand that.
We want, we want nothing more than for you to be able to do this. But I cannot allow us to take action, to work on this application, without benefit of our consultants and without having the arrears paid for.
Right. So I guess then.
And that is why.
Because I'm not giving more money for an engineer to look at this plan. If you're telling me every special use permit ever has, you've used an engineer in this capacity to this extent? I don't understand it, I really don't. And something has to change. And so I guess if I'm the catalyst for change with our company personally, from a business standpoint, right now or not, I guess then that's the deal.
As I started to say before, the provisions in the memorandum of understanding that you signed.
Yes.
For appeal of charges that you get. We'll take care of all of this for you. You will meet with the village board, not with us, and they have it in their power to reduce your charges by any amount they want. I cannot do that.
I'm not asking you to do that.
I cannot say that I will go ahead with your application without having had the arrears paid for, without having had enough money for our attorney and other consultants that we need to do the work to get this application processed. That's got to be here.
Well, for the record, I want to state that you didn't ask for what was due to your consultants. You asked for more. You didn't ask for $900 more, you asked for $1,600 more, $700 for additional engineering consultant.
Mrs. Ariel.
This application is ridiculous.
Mrs. Ariel.
And the MOU that I signed states that if there is a discrepancy in the escrow, it may halt application review. Doesn't say it has to. Words matter, it says "may." And there's no reason why I can't get the comments of the board and continue this application. You have every right to deny me if I'm still in arrears at a certain time, or not give me this certificate of occupancy. There are ways for you to do this without completely shutting me out.
Mrs. Ariel, you have asked me just now, I believe, to have the board evaluate your application without the benefit of our attorney or engineer present, without them having reviewed the last two.
I have not asked you to do that. Your engineer and your lawyer have given you more than enough advice. Two memos from a lawyer, two memos from an engineer, two memos from a local time village planner. Your board cannot make a decision on the work that's been done? I can't believe that.
My attorney.
I'm not willing to, so what?
The planning board attorney and the planning board engineer have not evaluated your last submission.
Oh, the planter at the bottom of the sign? They have to make sure that's there? Okay. So I mean, that's, and that's it. I mean, I guess then that's it. So I don't know what we do. I come every two weeks, I'm sick the entire day waiting for the meeting, and we fight. I don't know what else to do. I'm not giving you that money, just not. I'll pay for the bills if the appeal says that they are fine, that's fine. But I'm not giving you money for an engineer to tell you that a planter is at the bottom of the sign, or that the electric's on the building. What do you do in other special use permits? Does an engineer look at every single thing? An engineer didn't look at it two years ago.
There are problems with the site that have to do with a driveway that shouldn't be there, that have to do with other things.
Which you've gotten advice on from the engineer. You've gotten a little bit of advice. And the attorney. You've gotten two five-page memos from them. You've gotten the advice.
My attorney and engineer have not looked at the last submission you made. I want them to do so. I do not want the only attorney in the room to be Mr. Ariel.
That's not fair.
That is not fair at all!
That is not fair.
That is ridiculous!
It's not fair, and it shows.
Excuse me.
I guess I have to shut up.
May I?
Don't say anything.
First off, Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully disagree with some things. It's not your prerogative, it's the planning board by a vote of a majority of the delegates who have the authority to make a decision about this. And it is not your individual prerogative as a chair. To insist that the engineer and the attorney review the latest plans. We, as a planning board, have the right to discuss whether or not that's required and determine whether we feel that there's sufficient information from the applicants and from what we've already received from our planner, our engineer, and our attorney.
Okay, let me ask one thing.
No, please, I'm not finished.
I want to get the public hearing continued. I don't want, this is not the public hearing.
Well, I would prefer that we close the public hearing. And that we then be able to discuss whether or not we can act on this in some fashion that will in fact bring it to what everybody here desires, which is to bring this to a close so we can make a decision about this application.
This is one of the problems with not having our attorney here. And ask you this question for me. If we close the public hearing tonight, and I have to vote based on the site plan that we have, I don't think anybody in this room will be happy.
You don't have to vote on it. What we can do is discuss the site plan, we can talk about the particulars, we can then.
But you say close the public hearing tonight.
Yes, closing the.
Close it the night the clock starts, sir, correct?
Yeah. In my experience observing planning boards for five years, and having been on the planning board now for about six or seven months, I've never, to my, I can't recall a situation where it was necessary to keep a public hearing open in order to avoid a situation where the clock was so precious. I've never seen an applicant or a planning board be beholden to that to the extent that it seems to be, excuse me, necessary here. As far as in general what has happened is that public hearings are open, comments are taken, public hearings are extended if the application is complicated or controversial enough that it feels necessary to do that, usually because the public asks. And when public hearings are closed, then the discussion about the particulars of the site plan and the special use permit begin in earnest between the applicant and the planning board, and particularly among members of the planning board at the table. And I'm not so concerned about the clock ticking. I think what we can do then is adequately discuss it, and if there are revisions to the site plan that are relatively minor, it isn't typically necessary to reopen the public hearing. But if, and it's unlikely in this case, but when site plan changes dramatically or significant new information comes forward, then yes, sometimes it's necessary to have a new public hearing. So the questions you wanted to answer two weeks ago are the kinds of things that we can start asking once we've closed the public hearing. I'm not worried about the clock. And at this point, I would respectfully disagree with our chair. I don't think it's necessary for an engineer to review the revised set of plans. This is not a complicated project. We've gotten more than enough information from them. We have a professional planner here with decades of experience who can address specific issues, who's capable of looking at our code if we have questions that we can't answer ourselves. And we have people here with a lot of years of experience in this community and professional experience related to this. We should be having a reasonable conversation with the applicant about the particulars of the application so that we can move this forward, not delay this any further.
You have a point of information? If the clock starts ticking tonight, how long does it have to go before a decision has to be made?
62 days, which of course allows for months of 31 days, so two, I'm sorry, four meetings in our case, because we meet twice a month.
My question really wasn't so much on the clock, because I agree with Michael about the clocks issue. My question would go directly to the fact that I'm sitting here as a layperson, responsible to a public, responsible to a set of rules and regulations and code, without any pay, and also without the advice of my own counsel. That's not a very fair position to put me in.
Okay.
And this is somebody's livelihood, somebody's livelihood we're dealing with. You know, it's beyond, it's a very important thing. So to just sit here and say, I don't need an attorney, I'm going to make that kind of decision without that? I've been doing this for 35 years, I sat on that side of the table. I had things approved that today we'd never need today's code. So it's not from my lack of experience. It's not from my lack about being able to take a stand. I often take a stand where I shouldn't take a stand. So it's not from my ability for that. It's the fact that we're sitting here with, like Maurice said, a project that we all want to see happen, that there's a few legal and a few minor questions that some people may have. They must be minors, I don't know if they are. That we can't get answered because those people aren't here.
Michael, you said something that, I don't remember the exact words you used, but something about that it's not up to the chair to determine whether consultants look at an application before we act on it.
I said to the effect that I don't, it's not my, I don't believe that, that you or any other member of the planning board has the authority to simply request outside consultation on a project which gets billed to, it doesn't really even matter whether it gets billed to the taxpayers or to the applicant, without the planning board having the right to consider that and vote on it.
But this is how the planning board has done business as long as I've been here, which is I think four years. And I don't, the reason that it has been done this way is to expedite the process so that when an application comes in, or when a site plan, when a new drawing or a new modifications plan comes in, rather than have to wait until we meet to vote to say this has to go to an attorney or, you know, something else, it just gets done so that by the time the next meeting comes, we're ready to deal with it. So that's why we had that, that's why my understanding of why we have done this this way in the past.
Yeah.
And why I think it's a reasonable way to do it.
And there is some value in that, I.
And in this case, where we have money that is in arrears and money that in normal cases would require our attorney to evaluate the documentation and to prepare a resolution, and to make sure that we're doing everything legally and fairly so that we don't get hit with an Article 78 for being arbitrary and capricious by some future applicant, this is why we have an attorney.
I understand.
And the same thing for the engineer, so that we can now. When this application first came in, it was a drive-through, it was a much more complicated thing. There were problems with not being able to read the drawings on a PDF. There were problems with the drawings not being sent to the attorney and so on. There are many things that have delayed the allocation. From my perspective, the greatest delay was because we've been waiting for escrow to be replenished. And that has been for, I think it's a month. It is, I believe, two weeks ago.
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully understand the things you've said. And in many cases, I would agree that, or in general, I would agree that expediting applications is always something that applicants prefer to have happen. I believe at this point, it's clear that at some future planning board meetings, it's going to be necessary for us to review our process so that we can begin to evaluate whether all applicants, whether their change of use such as this versus a large multi-subdivision residential project or a large commercial venture, whether they all necessarily should be lumped under the same code, or whether we need to refine our code to some extent to distinguish between relatively minor and significant projects. But that's not for tonight. And so I'll only say personally, with the advantage of hindsight, I do not believe that an engineer was ever necessary for this project. Now, I couldn't have said that at the beginning, and you made that decision, and that's fine. You gave the reasons why, both for tradition and for expedition.
And because it was a drive-through.
Yes, but I think, but, but.
There was no drive-through, no, no, the engineers.
In any event, excuse me, Mrs. Ariel.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, I understand.
I'm sorry.
In hindsight, I feel that all of the stuff that the engineer provided us in his very thorough memo could have been done through the building department. That it was essentially a review of code and a review of the street file, which is stuff that we could do through our building department.
But it wasn't done.
But it could be done, and that's part of the process.
There's a process for taking care of that built through the voting board.
Right, and so.
It's not, that's not to make, tonight is to move this project along.
Right, and so I would, so my argument is, my request is that we, obviously we have a lot to talk about in terms of our process, but that's not for tonight. What I would ask is that we close the public hearing, that we begin a discussion with the applicant or at the table among planning board members of what the outstanding issues are that we see on the latest site plan, that we, on that basis, begin to prepare the necessary list of things that we need to go into a resolution for a special use permit, that we either charge our planner to prepare that resolution, who I believe is perfectly qualified to do that, given his years of experience, or do it in consultation with our attorney, that we ask the applicant to pay the $900 that is owed, and that we then move forward in such a way that we can get the questions answered that we, from the applicant, that need to get addressed, which are, I believe, of a, not a major nature that we could discuss with them without difficulty. And that, you know, depending on all of that, that we then, we'd be in a position to consider whether or not we could vote on, make a decision on this. I don't think we should ask them for any additional money, I don't think it's necessary. And if we do engage an attorney to draft a resolution for this, I would ask that we just consider eating that cost, or asking the village board to approve that cost. And if the applicant, as everybody has noted, wishes to appeal the bills that they have already paid for, they take that up with the village board, but that would be after the fact.
You're asking to modify the MOU and the code?
No, I'm not.
No.
Actually, I'm not asking to modify the MOU and the code.
Can I be heard on this?
There is, there is an amount in arrears.
Yes, and I'm asking that they pay it. That doesn't prevent us from going forward and having a discussion with them. We're caught in a catch-22 where they're not going to pay because you're insisting that the engineer and the attorney review the latest site plan. My argument is that's not necessary, and that we have.
And Michael, my argument is that the proper time for the appeal of these things is at the end with the village board.
That does not, we know how you use this.
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not appealing on their behalf to forgive them any money. I said very clearly, they should pay what is in arrears, but they should not have to pay any additional money for work that you have asked the engineer and the attorney to do, because I don't think that work is necessary at this point. The things that are on the site plan, we, as planning board members, are perfectly capable of dealing with as planning board members without, well, I am perfectly capable as a planning board member in dealing with those issues on the site plan without a consultation. in dealing with those issues on the site plan without a consultation from a professional engineer. That's my attorney. The attorney doesn't review the site plan. If the attorney needs to, if the attorney doesn't need to review the site plan any further, the changes that have been made to the site plan have to do with specific issues around where the sign and the planter, I have a few questions I would like to ask about certain kinds of shielding, things that I know can be dealt with through the building department, and through a conversation basically between us and the applicant. No, I don't think that the attorney necessarily needs, it might be in the course of conversation that things come up where the planning board or a majority comes to the determination that yes, it is necessary to do that. But a priori, I don't see that that's the case. And if four people disagree with me, then I'm outvoted and we continue forward along a different path. I, this is just how I feel, and I'm one of five people.
May I be heard on one thing, please?
So you wanna make a motion?
I clearly am. Can I, can I please be heard on one thing, please?
Sure, Mrs. Ariel.
Everywhere in the MOU and the code, it refers to the reviewing board that makes these decisions about how much is supposed to go into escrow, how much more you need, how much further review. It is all the planning board, not the chair.
You wanna make a motion, Mrs. Ariel?
I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing in this application, and that we then, as would normally be done, not necessarily by motion, that we begin discussion about the latest site plan. That we, based on that, that we give whatever questions that we have about the applicant, that either can be answered tonight at the table, or they can bring up at the next meeting. I would ask that we not make any decisions about this until the remaining nine hundred dollars according to Mr. Chairman be paid by the applicant into the escrow account. And also that we not spend any further dollars that would be incurred by the applicant on this project.
And does that include further legal consultation?
As I said, I believe that the, unless things change in the course of discussion, that at this point, I don't see any significant legal costs that we need to incur to finish this up.
But are you saying that we will not spend any more money on this application, is that what you're saying?
I think at this point, given the circumstances, that would be a gesture worth considering, yes.
Please give me a yes or no. Are you saying that you, that your motion is that we not spend, that we not contract for any more legal or, or engineering consulting? Is there a motion?
Yes, my motion is that we not contract for any more legal or engineering consultation unless such comes up during the course of the discussion that the applicant and the planning board agree it's necessary.
All right, then may I ask if, if this motion carries? And if, if they don't pay the money?
The money that's in arrears.
Yeah, okay, so you're assuming that they, that they will pay that?
I'm not making any assumptions. I'm merely stating what it is I would like to see happen. I'm not assuming anything by us or by them.
Okay, so let's say that they do pay that money, the nine hundred dollars, and we're now at zero. This is zero balance in escrow.
Yep.
And so we cannot now pay for an attorney to do anything for us for this application. All right?
Okay, that's, you're, you're making, you're, you, you're trying to get me to say something, since I'm not prepared to say it.
I'm not trying to get you to say, I'm trying to understand what, I'm trying to understand the implications of what you're saying.
There are lots of implications. The implication is that we move this project forward and begin again to have a reasonable dialogue with the applicant. At this point in time, I don't believe it's necessary to have consultants either in the wings or at the table in order to have that conversation with them. I believe that all of the things, the questions that I've had for several weeks and that Rich asked to have addressed a couple of weeks ago are all things that we can have a conversation with them about. What comes from that conversation, nobody knows because we haven't had it yet.
All right, okay.
And if it turns out that we need consultation, and the board agrees, and the applicant agrees, then there's no controversy, because they have agreed, yes, that's something we hadn't thought of, that's essential. Yes, please go ahead and do that.
And if we don't agree if the board thinks one way and they take another, and, and the clock is ticking, and it's sixty-two days, and we haven't taken action because we haven't gotten any-
There are lots of possible scenario outcomes here. I'm not gonna presume to address only the ones that you've come up with, because there are lots of others we could come up with as well. The fact of the matter is, at least let's move this forward. If we reach another roadblock in the future, we'll deal with that when it comes. But right now, this thing is completely mired down because the, the inability to do anything, because one side says, no, I won't pay, and the other side says, you have to pay or we're not gonna go forward, and, and we're gonna ask you for more money. My point is, I don't think it's necessary, from what I can see from here to there, that that's a requirement. That more money being asked of them, that may change in the future. And if we reach a point where we are again at a roadblock, it is conceivable that the project will die, or it will be denied, or something of that sort. But for now, I don't think that we need to try to predict all of the possible outcomes. But we should at least give it an opportunity to move forward so that we can go forward and they have an opportunity to.
Okay, so does anybody need Michael to restate the motion? Or is there someone willing to second?
Well, I, I wouldn't know what I, the, the motion is too long, so I wouldn't know what I'm seconding. I would second the motion if, if I might. I would second the motion to close public hearing. Punto.
That's really all I'm asking.
If that's the motion, if the motion is close public hearing, I would second the motion to close public hearing.
That's all I'm asking, actually. Everything else was asked of me, but yes, the motion is to close the public hearing.
I'd second that motion.
Okay, go on, favor?
Wait, can we have further discussion?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Because I understood that Rich might have some-
Would you, I would do.
Some ideas about, which I, I heard you begin to state, but I didn't quite understand what you were getting at.
You know, I'm trying to be as fair as possible in this situation. And looking across the table, you know, thinking that the applicant is what drives this meeting is the wrong way to look at it. We're colorblind as those across from the table. Look at how rich they are, how poor they are, who they are. It's the application, it's the site, it's the use of the site that's important here. It's the safety of the public, it's the general safety and welfare of the public that we're here to charge and protect. So as much as we love the applicant across the table, or as much as we dislike the applicant across the table, it should not affect us. Not having our attorney present at every meeting bothers me. It really bothered me. And I spent thirty-five years in that side of the table, and every time I had a client that was important to me, I had their attorney with me. Every time, insisted they had their attorney with me. The only time I did this was when I got my own application, and it took me three meetings to get approved. So I think it's rather important that we have our attorney at these meetings when we have these important decisions to make. The way it's set up to have that attorney here is this escrow. As poorly as it's written, as poor as it may be, we have to work on changing that. But today, that's the only thing we have in front of us that allows us to have this move forward. In order to have our attorney here, that escrow has to be paid. And the way escrow is set up, it's paid with an anticipation of future bill. And when we turn, we don't spend. Not looking to take anybody's money, we don't make a nickel off it. To move forward on an application that's developed so much public controversy, we're in Facebook nowadays with this issue. Without the use of an attorney, I don't know if that's fair to the applicant or to us. So am I prepared to vote on this? I'm still thinking. How's that for a long answer to a short question?
It's my understanding, Rich, that unless I'm mistaken and things have changed, that the planning board has an attorney who, we were given a certain amount of money so that they would be able to come to every planning board meeting. That is, that there was a dollar amount that they presumably agreed to. And I recognize in this, in the current fiscal year, that that mu, that that dollar amount was slashed to a very low number, and it might be, I don't know what the contract with our attorney says, so it might be that they aren't coming to every meeting as a result of that. And that's an issue that we should be taking up with the village board as they work through their budget this month. We did ask for more money.
Michael, that's really irrelevant, because the amount that we have now, the two thousand dollars a year, comes to about forty-five minutes a month, twenty-two and a half minutes a meeting.
Yes.
And the attorney doesn't come for that, there are other, other charges that, that he has paid. So for this year, we can't talk about what we're asking for.
Right, so-
And I'm, and I'm talking about attorney services as they directly relate to this application.
Yeah.
Not to business of the planning board in general. Planning, that's what I'm talking about.
So, the dilemma that I see, for me, in this is that we, okay, this doesn't, this doesn't eliminate the opportunity to close the public hearing and begin a discussion about specific things on the site plan. We're not gonna take, we're not gonna take any action tonight. We don't have a resolution prepared to, in any way, shape, or form, to approve, deny, or approve conditionally. So that's not gonna happen tonight. But at least the opportunity to move the application forward, I don't see that tonight we necessarily need an attorney to have the conversation about the size of the sign, and the location, and type of the planters, and how they're depicted on the site plan, and issues about shielding around the LP gas and so forth. And maybe if that conversation happens, maybe we can then generate a more favorable climate in which the applicant and the planning board can discuss whether or not it would be valuable for the planning board to have an attorney here at a future meeting with an understanding of what that dollar amount might be, and in a different climate, the applicant might be more receptive to that. But right now, I, I, I can clearly see why they wouldn't be.
Well, I thought that's where the seven hundred came from.
No, according to, according to the applicant, the seven hundred is from the engineer.
Let me try to explain this to Mahassi for a second. Under the escrow agreement, if somebody is in arrears, what happens to the application? Does it stop them in the tracks, or is it worth it?
It, it does, and I'm gonna read you the provision. And again, this is not, this is extremely, I want to say this is extremely uncomfortable. Clearly, the village board, that village board sitting at the time, knew exactly what it was doing when it wrote the following. However, here we are in the position in front of an actual applicant, in front of us, in an individual application. This is about as uncomfortable as I can possibly imagine, and I've seen some uncomfortable situations over the years. Suddenly, the applicant fails to deposit the requested review fees into an escrow account. Any applicant review, approval, permit, or COs shall be with, shall be withheld or suspended by the reviewing board officer or employee of the village until such money is deposited. I'm actu, I actually have, I've actually simply just, I may, I'm supposed to adhere to ethics for the village and for the certification I hold. On TV, I'm saying I'm, I'm willing to discuss it, however, I really don't have any business doing so. But sure, yes, I'm gonna say, I don't have the stomach for this. Okay, I don't. I mean, I don't have the, you know, so I'm, I'm, but I have no business doing this as a professional, but I will. And I'm gonna say again, the owner of this property has, has, has caused this applicant to incur fees that they should not have, and also that I begged the applicant's attorney to look at the file himself. Please look at it, and that never occurred. That could have saved time and money.
And I'll say one other thing that is slightly irrelevant, but bears some need for discussing again. Until this fiscal year, we had a retainer for our attorney for which any work that was done on behalf of an application at a meeting was not charged to the applicant. In this case, those, the amount of time that our attorney has spent so far on this was about a thousand dollars. Take a little under a thousand dollars. And the total amount, I'm not sure if I can find it now, but I take the total amount that the attorney has spent, see if I can find it. It's eighteen hundred or something like, do you remember the numbers, Kurt?
I, generally speaking, I do. At this point, I believe it's nine hundred dollars in arrears, given carn filling.
But that's the total.
Well, I'm sorry, from, from my turn.
I'm asking for, for the attorney.
I don't recall the, the total number, so.
Okay, let me just take a quick look at my number. I, I, I don't wanna take such a detour here, but I think it's informative. Okay, Fort Myers is twelve hundred in February, and March so far was eight hundred. And I don't have it here, but I do know that of that two thousand, I heard from the attorney, specific question answered, how much was that for meeting time? And it was about half of that. For the engineer, from February fifth to March fifth, in other words, everything that he has done so far was nineteen hundred dollars. So that's about thirty-nine hundred dollars to date. And we have asked for an additional sixteen hundred to take us through the next reviews and meeting. So anyhow, that's just another data point, that, that the total fee for this applicant would be a thousand dollars less to date than we have incurred so far. And the, I don't have handy, I, I can find it if we have a way for this. Well, I was looking for the information from Klausert about how much it would cost him to be at the next meeting and to review the last submission. I know that it is in total, between the engineer and the attorney, in total, it is seven hundred dollars. Because we've asked for sixteen hundred, and they owe nine hundred, that leaves seven hundred, and that covers both the attorney and the engineer. To review the last submission, and to be at the meeting, and draft resolutions, and do all that stuff.
So, uh, may I speak now?
Please.
I, I have, I have no doubt that we need to have an attorney. And I think there are several issues in this particular application that have indicated the importance of having an attorney present. I'm still not clear about why that need impedes us from closing the public hearing, given that we have sixty-two days further to consider this before a decision has to be made.
The code says what?
The code says that we shouldn't be undertaking any business. The board that, that enacted this knew exactly what it was doing. However, here we are, all of us, the applicant, the board, staff, those are the audience who care about this business, and all of us who do. We're here right at this moment, but they, I'm sure that that's not, I'm sure that that's the language that they intended that got into the code.
The MOU that I signed says that the planning board shall make all of the decisions about what further review needs to be done, what amounts-
We're not talking about the MOU at this time.
Well, you seem to always refer to the MOU when you didn't wanna talk to me about giving me more money. You always put it up, you know, the MOU you signed, the MOU you signed, the MOU you signed. MOU you signed says that-
Mrs. Ariel-
Excuse me.
At this moment, we're talking to the-
The planning board will agrees the, to the estimates, and the project review may be sus, may be sus, suspended until such amounts have been received, based on the planning board's decision. It doesn't say it must, it doesn't say it has to.
Right, the code does.
Well, okay, you didn't bring up the code.
I'm sorry.
In all fairness-
But this is what I signed.
But I did, I just, I just asked our planning board to read the code.
Right.
Right, okay, I understand.
And in all fairness, we've already violated the code, because we opened the public hearing when the money was in the-
That's right.
We opened the public hearing because we, we voted to have a public hearing.
I understand.
Having been certain, we noticed it, the public, we were obligated to open the public hearing.
No, actually, I would, well, first off, we may have voted, I don't recall, but we may have actually-
We voted to open the, to have a public hearing.
I was in the middle of, I heard you, I under, I heard you.
But you disagreed with me.
No, I was in the middle of a sentence when you interrupted. We may have voted on it at- We may have voted on it at a time when the money was in arrears as well, the escrow account was in arrears. That I can't speak to. But I do believe that based on this code, we would have been, it would have been legally defensible for us to not hold the public hearing by simply stating, despite having noticed it, despite having voted to hold it, it turns out that subsequent, if indeed it was subsequent, that they were in arrears, we don't have to do that. So that's a, that's a what-if kind of situation. So I guess at this point, my position still is that the code is what it says. The code may be in disagreement with the M O U's, that, the language of the M O U that's been derived based on the code. That's possible. It seems to be the case. And it certainly seems to be the case that the planning board has chosen to push the boundaries of what the code says, for whatever reasons, in order to move this application a little bit further. I would think, given the relatively non-controversial nature of the application itself, and given what the applicant has been subjected to, that what I would like to see happen, I still support. And that begins with the motion to close the public hearing, for which we have a second.
I'd like to go back to one thing, as part of my contribution to this discussion. I, I've heard several times about what the applicant has had to go through. And many, many of the delays, or a good part of the delay in our being able to deal with the application, had to do with escrow payments.
That is incorrect. That is an incorrect statement. That is incredibly incorrect. And if that were true, how would the engineer and lawyer be able to bill so many hours then? It is incorrect and ridiculous.
I was, I'm reluctant to bring this up, and I'm not gonna say more than what, one thing. Because I know the public perception of this has been that the applicant is a victim or an unfortunate player in a process in which the planning board and the planner have become the evil people here. And, and I, and I, anecdotally, and I haven't researched this fully, so I can't give any details, but I hope to, I don't know that the applicant is entirely blameless from the point of view, and I don't mean this with any disrespect to you all, and I understand you're in a sensitive position here. But I don't know that the applicant is entirely blameless for every dollar that's been expended or every minute that has passed, without knowing, you know, without having looked at the bills to see if there are charges between the applicant and, say, the engineer or the attorney that they chose to initiate, for instance. I don't know if those exist. They may exist. I've heard that that might have happened. But again, that's anecdotal, and so I'm not going on the record with that, but I'm just saying. In addition, there are things that may have happened early on in the process that made this more complicated than it needed to be. And in an effort, in all good faith, to expedite this, we did engage consultants. But the point is that at some point, we have to say enough, and that's what I'm saying. Is that I think we have spent enough of the engineering dollars to get the information that we need in order to move forward with this. And if the applicant is willing to pay the money they owe, then I think we're in a position to, hopefully, in my opinion, begin to move the project forward further. But again, I come back to the point that I would just ask them that we close the public hearing.
May I say something else? The chairman wants to recognize a member of the public slash press.
Go ahead, Tom.
What I have to say doesn't have anything to do with the, the virtues of the applicant or the virtues of our attorney. I wanna know what our position is relative to the possibility of closing public hearing. And if, if the interpretation of the code is that we can't do anything, well, does that mean that we can't extend the public hearing? That we can't close the public hearing? That we can't do anything? I mean, I don't understand. I mean, I've chaired thousands of meetings. I hate to say that. It's true. And I've never found myself in a position of not being able to at least close the meeting, you know, formally, or to, to move some item somehow. So I don't know what the interpretation is that, of the existing, of the code, which is the defining regulation for us. The code defines what we can do. Does it say that we can't do anything? I mean, we're talking about a meeting. Can we not close a meeting?
Unfortunately, for better or for worse, it's terribly specific, and I'm sure it was intended to be. However, the, the village board that adopted this probably was not anticipating this very moment, this very setting, and this very local business. That's, and you know what? What I just said is, is not that constructive. But at this point, I'm, I'm starting to depart a little bit from, from technical planning advice and I'm a member of this community as well as its planning.
Well, I wanna know about the meeting. Can we not close the meeting?
Well, we've, that shit, that horse is out of the barn. I mean, so we might as, we might as well, because we, in expectation of hoping to resolve the escrow issues, we, we, we went out on them a little bit. We went further than we should. We're already here. I wouldn't suggest that we stop abruptly now as far as the decision to close the hearing or the, the motion to close the hearing. We're already here now, and we've already exceeded our authority.
Well, I, I don't wanna exceed my authority, so I'm left in a quandary.
Well, we're, we're in that quandary and, and not taking any action would, well, we remain in that quandary.
The advice that I got from our attorney was that we should have the public hearing. We should, we should take testimony from the public on the merits of the application. We should continue the application to a date certain, which would be the next meeting, in anticipation of the applicant paying the amount of escrow that we needed to complete the application. Once the application was completed and disposed with, we have the resolution, we did C P R, we approve it, it moves on, the applicant can, within fifteen days of receiving the invoices that were charged against their escrow account, appeal to the village board for a refund of any or all of it. It would then be up to the village board as an elected legislative body, they have the power to do that, to cancel all or some of them. We cannot, we cannot do all of the nice things that we would like to do. If we were gonna do this based on an applicant's popularity or anything like that, you know, we, we don't need a planning board. Madam Press.
Yes, one question. Who drafted the, the M O U?
Who's what?
Who drafted the memorandum of understanding, which differs from the code?
Well, it's, it's, it's different from the code. It's different. It's a different document. It's, it's, it's an agreement that has, it's-
But who drafted the, the M O U?
I'm not sure myself. I'm outside over this consolidated department. But it was, it was, I believe it was under the previous illumination. That's, that's my understanding, and that's not initial.
I don't remember which, what part we did.
It seems an effort to expedite the process, but in doing so, as we're looking as closely as possible as we are now, I think you can see that the M O U does not quite comport. The, the code anticipates that the first meeting with the planning board would involve no real review or progress other than identifying the consultants needed and how much might be the appropriate initial escrow deposit.
You know, the, the process has in it an ability for an applicant to come to the planning board with what's called a pre-application meeting. That has a minimal or low fee. I don't remember how much it is.
Low fee.
So, no fee. So they would have some time with the planning board, informally, show us what you're talking about, and we'll, we'll just shoot from the cup and give some ideas of what we think is a possible roadblock so that we can expedite this. That wasn't done in this case because we needed the shortcut or they, they had some time pressures. So that, that wasn't applied for. We just had the regular swishy's program. Okay, so-
I'm still not sure what we can do. I would do something. I would like to do something.
We have two options at, at this point. We can vote yea or nay on this motion to close the public hearing. I think that's it. Is there any more discussion?
I have a public comment in the public hearing. Not a question, a public comment. May I comment? I'm a member of, a member of this community. I've served on village and town committees. I've invested forty-four years of my life here. I want to make a comment, not ask a question.
Go ahead.
My name's Paul Brown, and I've listened carefully to the discussion. And having served as a chair and a member of the planning board at town level, and had many, many meetings with a man I respected very much and learned from, Mr. George Dens, and he was chair of the village board, I'd rest in peace, same thanks. I don't envy the position. I can feel for the applicant. I can feel for a member. We regularly, we have an escrow law. In fact, we passed one long after you did. So I want to comment on the fact that I was often in a position that the chair said, you used our discretion. I respond very much to Mr. Zeiler and your plan. Your attorney is being pointed here. Your attorney didn't seem to mind that technically you broke the law when you held the meeting. They then advised you to keep it open. That's another decision. I want to say that I respect this attorney. I had a lot to do with that attorney having this job, that firm. But the consultants and the attorneys wanna ensure that their flow of income is there. So of course, their advice is biased by the fact that, "Public public hearing open. Make sure the applicant pays." This is your discretion. You've already taken the plunge, as your client has said. I ask you to consider that whatever you do now, there will be consequences. Are you worried about an offer seventy-eight? I'd rather worry about one from the applicant that tears our community apart than from some third anonymous party who's gonna look back at a code that was poorly written and a memo that they have to draft as properly and say, "Oh, you passed this." You've already seen that the D O T doesn't have any, you know, say here and interest and advice. This is our community. This is what local planning in New York's famous about. There will be no consequence. You have sixty-two days. That's a long time to ask the questions. Rich, I don't think your fears, I, I know what it is to be afraid of these things. We worry about our income. You have experience. How, you've been on the board, don't, I'm considering asking a question. I respect you. You've been involved in land use planning. There is no downside. You can reestablish a hearing. If you see that the plan changes in the conversation that this new Zeiler proposes, then you'll say, "This is significant change. By the way, we're opening the public hearing again." You have that right. You can make any approval of the site contingent upon a final payment. The applicant, knowing they have an approval, if that's what they get, can go ahead, deposit it, then appeal the normal way. But it's very difficult, as I know as a chair, to keep asking applicants to pour into a bottomless pit, not knowing that they're gonna get an approval. So you have the discretion. No one's gonna sue you. Do what's right in your hearts and minds for the community and without fear. Because you'll get sued one way or another. By the way, forty-four years that we're waiting for somebody to sue the town, nobody ever passed. I don't know about the village, but I doubt that too. So we keep elephants away very well, and we also keep lawsuits away. Because your discretion and five members of this board who care about this community act in unison. So you can cancel, you can close the hearing. You have sixty-two days. That's why there is a law. If you cancel in sixty-two days, then you're not doing your job, and you haven't done your homework, and you don't need these consultants. But you'll have them here. You'll decide what cost. You'll decide what to charge back. I wouldn't worry about a code written by people we don't even know. Move forward with what your mind tells you. There will be no negative consequences, except if you warn the fear. So you can close the public hearing without fear. You can watch what happens in the next four meetings in sixty-two days. You can reopen the hearing, and any approvals will be contingent upon, you won't sign. I never signed the plan till the cash was in the bank.
Mr. Brown, thank you very much, sir. The statement, "I wouldn't worry about code that we don't know who wrote."
I didn't ask you. This is a public comment session, not a conversation. So you don't need to rebut me.
Mr. Brown, you've had a say.
No, but unless you rebut it.
You've had a very long say, sir.
It's a hearing.
It's a hearing, but you've had a very long say in the hearing.
You listen, we speak.
I thank you very much.
Could I possibly say something? Hi, my name is Anna Fino, and I will admit that I am new to all of the insanity that's going on here, but I'm not new to business. I've been a business owner in the town for a number of years. I would say semi-successful, and I've seen businesses come and I've seen businesses go, and I've watched New Palt survive through a horrible recession and still manage to be a fantastic place to be, for businesses, for people, as a community. Cupcakes make people happy. Cupcakes make people happy. We're not, this is a reasonable person.
This has nothing to do with cupcakes, ma'am.
Sir, I feel like you've made this very personal. This is my opportunity as a member of the public to speak. I know this person on a professional level. She's extremely reasonable. If you show her why you need something, she'll give it to you. She's very reasonable. She's frustrated. She's upset. She's hurt. She wants to cooperate with you guys. She's just asking for a little bit of leeway, a little bit of understanding, a little bit of transparency, to see where the money is going, what specifically it's needed for, and why do you really need an engineer to decide that a planting box is the right dimensions? Can you not take a role yourself? We're just, we're asking for something positive for the community.
What a point of order, Mr. Chairman. We are, the, the item on the table is no longer the public hearing. The item on the table is a motion by a member of this board that's been seconded. And the discussion is to be on the table about the motion. So I would say that both of the last two comments are out of place.
Yes, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Aye. Opposed.
I understand.
Okay, so the motion doesn't carry.
Isn't there a reason for extension?
You don't have to give a reason for extension, as far as I understand it. Two days, two days of extension.
Just an opposed. Oh, God. I can't do it anymore. I don't know what I'm doing. I'm not doing it. I don't do it anymore. Okay.
So.
So does that mean that the, the public hearing is continued till the next meeting?
Well, I think we need a motion to continue it to the next meeting. Second? There's a second for motion to continue?
Well, seconded for purposes of discussion.
Any discussion?
I don't believe that a, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe that a motion is necessary to continue it. That would leave the board in potentially neither here nor there.
I, I guess I should go ahead and, since I'm the one that abstained and threw a monkey wrench here, my apologies to everyone, but I'm new to this. I'm very, because of the way that the code reads and our job, as I understand it, is that we apply the code. This is practically screens to have legal representation here to advise us.
I've got a question.
No.
Well, I'm just gonna say it anyway.
No.
If, if y'all can't make a decision on this without having a lawyer present, then what's the point of y'all even being here and coming in here? What's, what's the point?
Sir.
This is a formal proceeding. There's rules.
Okay.
And because we have that code that says that, I, I feel as though my hands are tied as a board member. I feel as though my hands are tied as a board member. As a member of the general public, I have an opinion that differs from what I feel my duties are as a planning board member. And again, I'm too new to this to feel comfortable making a decision if we need to keep this open. Because this has turned into such an emotional thing with two different pieces of paperwork telling us two different things. How can we justify as a planning board member, as planning board members, although I'm only going to speak for myself, that we break the codes that we're supposed to be applying? And yes, we have gotten to the point where we've already technically broken that code, if I understand our director of planning correctly.
Liz, I think we broke the code because we were trying to expedite help out a member of the community.
Because we were trying...
We tried to expedite help out a member of the community, and we jumped ahead.
And...
If someone had come to us with three suits and six planners and a bunch of attached cases, we may not have done that. And, you know, Liz, whenever it was, I guess it was almost a month ago, that we got to a point where we had changes that had to be made to the plans. At that time, I told the applicant that if, again, we got the plans and the changes necessary by the Friday at the end of the week for which Tuesday was the deadline, I would say that we would put that on the agenda for the next meeting, which was ten days after that. And I also mentioned that we had an escrow replenishment that had to be dealt with. On March fifteenth, Mr. Ariel asked to meet with me offline. And I met with him the next day on that Saturday. And he asked me, and I told him, that if the escrow was paid on Tuesday, the nineteenth, which would be the next Tuesday, so that the consultants had enough time and the board had enough time to review the last submission. And the public hearing board, and the public hearing minutes from that meeting, and all issues with the previous submissions that were a problem were fixed, then we'd be able to make our resolution and take final action at the April second meeting, which is what I had thought would happen. I thought that they would pay the sixteen hundred dollars that we asked for by March nineteenth, so that I could call the attorney and the engineer and say, "Do your last review of the last submission." And this is a complicated application. I know people think it's not. But this is very complicated because, as Kurt mentioned, the owner of the property hasn't done some things that should have been done. And I don't feel confident in assessing the right path to take to protect the village from granting a special use permit with a driveway that is blocked by a planter when that driveway was supposed to be taken out nine years ago. Or however many years it is.
More than that.
More than that.
More than that.
So, we have a longstanding problem that needs to be addressed. And from my perspective, it needs to be addressed legally and properly. In the last four years that I have been involved with the planning board, we have had three Article seventy-eight suits. And I don't want another. I don't want one that I caused or that I was involved in and should have done something differently so that we wouldn't be subjected to a successful Article seventy-eight suit. And that's why I'm here. I'm here to execute the code as is written, without knowing or caring who wrote it or why they wrote it. It's not my job. If the code says we have to do something, that's what I'm here to do. I can't make exceptions because I think this is a great application. I think it's a great applicant. I think people would be happy if I did it. Can't do that. I won't. And in good faith, I thought that we would get the money that we expected by the nineteenth or sooner or some point. And that the mechanism in place for the appeal of outrageous or superfluous or whatever anybody thinks of these consulting fees is in place. It's there for the village board to decide, not us. And so, that's my job as chair. And that's all I can do.
I'd like to know where we're going from here, though.
I would say, at this moment, it depends on whether the applicant pays the escrow.
No, I don't mean, I mean just at this meeting.
At this meeting.
I'm talking about now, right now, here.
Then the public hearing portion of this is over. And we have some other things on the agenda to discuss. I need to take a break.
He needs to leave, I believe.
Yeah. The motion to close the public hearing was, did not pass. And it would remain open until our next meeting.
I would just, okay, well, with that in mind, before we leave this item on our agenda, there are two things. One is, I would like to make a motion as a member of the planning board that we not, I don't know if you can make a motion not to do something, but we could try. I'd like to make a motion that we not engage our engineer any further on this application until we get to a point at which the planning board has re-entered a discussion of the site plan with the applicant. And if at that time, issues come up that a majority of the planning board members feel is necessary to engage the engineer then, but that we don't a priori ask the applicant for additional money to cover engineering costs. That we, that's the motion.
Can I speak to this? Is that marking?
No, unless you second it.
Oh. I'll second it then. Because I'm with you.
Okay.
The shortcut is on the board. We've approved relocating a liquor store. We've approved a new bar to open uptown town. We've approved a chocolate shop to go where a laundromat was. This board has done some very good things in the community. I firmly believe that if we had followed the procedures everybody else had followed all along and had met our escrow account responsibilities everybody else has all along, tonight we would be approving this application.
Last month we would have been approving it.
I don't know about last month, but I can almost assuredly say this one. Because I'm not so sure that their consultants would make changes on the site plan as quick as they would be. But I can almost say with certainty, tonight, we would be done. And we would have had happy applicants and a happy audience. But we went ahead on promises all along. We didn't stop us until we get this point. And we've spent more time talking about the escrow plan than we've spent talking about settling. Farmer. This escrow issue is a discussion that shouldn't be with Monica Case.
Correct. I agree with all of you. And my motion isn't asking that we forgive them anything. And I can't make a motion requiring them to pay. And so, I'm not going to. All I'm saying is that, in my opinion, as one member of the planning board, from what I see of this application and the latest site plan, I do not believe that we need an engineer to review the site plan in order for us to then consider the issues that are on the site plan. That is specifically the changes that are there or anything else. That's all I'm saying.
I'm not necessarily sure we do either, but I'm not going to say we may not. Because if that's what it takes to get this approved, then it should be approved.
That's fine.
I can certainly foresee it ain't going to much, but I want it to be approved.
But that's the conversation we're trying to have, which...
I know.
At that point.
But where can we get to that?
We're also not saying that, under no circumstances would she pay them. But you keep saying these things as if the number doesn't matter. If they would just pay, they would just pay. The number matters, Rich.
It does matter.
That's what she's saying. So, I mean, and listen.
And I'm not, I'm telling you, with all due respect, I'm not saying... Okay, if this motion is not acceptable, then I would make another motion, which is that the chair has asked, as a single member of the planning board, that the applicant pay seven hundred dollars for work yet to be done. And I would say that that's something that the planning board as a whole should vote on.
Excuse me, may I speak to this as well?
I'm looking at what I believe to be the latest version of the site plan. And I note that there are planters that are indicated on there. And I also note that it looks like the curb cut has been fixed, but it hasn't. It says, "Approximate location of anticipated curb cut closure." Are any of us in a position to decide that the site plan is appropriately structured for our approval without additional input? Do we need additional input to know that the planters are enough to stop people from driving in and out of there? Are they, I don't know if they're enough.
But it took...
I'd like them to be enough.
What was previously approved was much more suitable because it involved curbing the landscape.
It involved curbing the landscape. But may I also want to say that I feel like I'm at a significant disadvantage because the code wasn't followed for nineteen years. Why is that put on me now? The code is clear. Responsibility of owners, it says. The owners, it shall be the responsibility of the owner of the property to maintain all Wall Street parking, loading, unloading driveways, aisles, and access in good condition, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And if the owner fails to undertake repairs after proper notification, by the building inspector, not by the planning board, we're not cops, by the building inspector, the board of trustees, not the planning board. This is a problem with the board of trustees. This is not a planning board problem. And I feel significantly disadvantaged by having to make decisions that should have been made by the building inspector, the board of trustees, and the owner. Not the applicant and not us. And I may need an engineer. I may need an engineer to help me know whether the curb cut has been done or not or whether a planter is sufficient to block an aisle or not. I may need that.
You might. That's true.
I might.
That's true.
Which is not to say that they should put more money than they've already put. I don't know about that. But I do know that some things have not been done for nineteen years that should have been done and are now put on the planning board unfairly. And we are not, I'm not an engineer. I'm a philosopher by the frame.
Those are all fair. That's true. I...
Well.
Thank you, Tom, if I may speak, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm still in a quandary, since we've broken our own rule. By having the open, I mean, if you read that one rule that Kurt had read, how do you fix that? How do you, you can't undo it.
No, we can't undo it.
So, we're now between an even bigger rock and an even harder, but...
No.
We don't have to make it worse.
No, we've already, we've already essentially placed ourselves there. I, like I said, even I can't, it's impossible to abide by that and attempt to establish myself in this community as a planner. And it's not the first time I've seen this type of thing.
What I'm asking is, there's a motion and a second. Is that we not, it's my opinion that, at this point, as far as the site plan that I see, that we haven't had substantive discussions about the site in a while, that we do not ask the applicant to put any more money towards costs not yet incurred. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
And if, with the understanding that what I'm trying to do is change the climate here so that the applicant will consider paying the money that's in arrears, not something I could put in the motion. And that will enable us to then begin to have a conversation, the five of us and the applicant and whichever professionals they choose to bring with them. That's their business. If during the course of those conversations, things come up that we deem require professional consultation on our behalf, then we can have a conversation about that. But I don't want to put that before we've had the opportunity to have the conversation. Because in my opinion, as one person on the planning board, I don't see anything on the application that requires an engineer review before we begin to talk about it.
Okay.
This is not my issue with this process. The code is very specific here. To take action on it without having at least the nine hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And there is specific mention about replenishment of the escrow amount.
Okay.
So, that would be nine hundred plus five hundred.
Okay, well, that's, okay, but...
And, excuse me. And from my perspective, the process has to be honored. And I don't want to make decisions without an attorney at least looking at what there is to be done. If at some point, you feel, anybody here feels, that after the escrow is paid, when we are able to take some action, such as changing something, I'm happy to discuss it. But until then, I feel that it is illegal for us to take action.
Okay, I'm not sure what you mean by take action. What I'm asking, it's clear to me, and I think if it was stated in the public, I don't believe you'll deny it, you have asked the applicant for sixteen hundred dollars.
That's right.
Nine hundred in arrears for what they owe and seven hundred for some amount of additional consultation from our engineer and/or attorney. And which side of the table you ask, it isn't entirely clear to me what that was for. And all I'm saying is, I don't feel that we should ask them for additional money because your arguments from previous evenings and for much of tonight was that you didn't, you personally didn't want the planning board to take any, begin the process of discussing the site plan until the attorney and the engineer had reviewed the latest version. And my argument is, that's not necessary.
What I said was that the escrow had to be replenished.
No, you didn't say that, actually, until just now. What you said was that the escrow, that they needed to pay the nine hundred in arrears and that you had asked them for an additional seven hundred dollars according to... and that you had asked them for an additional $700 according to the applicant, specifically for the engineer.
No, it's not.
And according to you for the engineer and the attorney. But you've more than once said that you wanted the engineer and the attorney to review the latest plans, not before we discussed them.
Every other process, every other application that we have had here has gone that way. That an application would come in, we have had our attorney and if necessary, an engineer, if it had anything to do with engineering, anything like driveway, planters, parking, whatever that is, the engineer gets involved.
Well, I.
There's, excuse me, and this is how, this is how we have done a business since I have been attending and being part of planning board meetings, which is 40 years. And I believe it's how it went on before that. But that's beside the point. It's how I understand the law to be written, it's how I understand the process to be followed. And that's what we have been waiting for, it's what I have been waiting for. In good faith, I really thought that since the applicant wanted to further the application, the escrow money would be forthcoming. And the explanation that this, that we cannot talk about reducing any fees or anything like that, even though I did, and I regret having done it. My initial request for additional escrow was for $3,000 over the $1,000 initial deposit. Because we had already spent about $2,000 at that point, maybe more than that. I don't remember the exact numbers. But I asked for $3,000 to bring us up to $4,000. And it was because we had to do it twice, because the plan was changed. At that point, Mrs. Ariel said she only could pay $2,000. I said, okay, but only if that doesn't, if that succeeded, at the meeting, we have to stop. And we wouldn't be able to go any further, and you have to pay whatever that is. I respect cash flow problems, I respect cost of doing business problems. I understand all of this, and it's not my job to make their decision for them. It's my job to execute the code. And that's what I did. Now, I reduced it from 3,000 to 2,000. I shouldn't have done it, but I responded to her anger, to her pressure, and to her being upset. And I was done.
I respect that and I understand that, I've heard that before and I appreciate that you're saying that again. I, that doesn't change what I'm asking. I, it may be that this planning board and perhaps earlier planning boards have had a habit of, or made it a tradition of engaging an engineer and an attorney for every application. I, my recollection as a liaison from the village board to the planning board was that that was not the case on every single application. But again, I would have to go back and look into it, see if that was true. But I do feel, as Mr. Brown said from the public, that we have some discretion. I don't feel like some members of the planning board have said that we are slaves to the code without any ability to use some human common sense and decision-making. And I don't mean being capricious. In fact, if you look at the motto that was on the letterhead of the planning board some years ago, one of our charges is not just to execute the code and protect the village from lawsuits. It doesn't say that anywhere. What it says is that we are charged with reasonable planning based on what the master plan says. That's really our document of record is the master plan.
Did you take an oath of office?
I did take an oath of office.
And didn't that say that you have to execute the code and the constitution of the state and of the country? Isn't that part of the oath of office?
Yes, it is.
So, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to say.
Right, and there's also another document, which is the master plan. And then there's also the reality, which is that we, our responsibility is to good planning in the village. And good planning means.
We are not planning now, we're processing an application. I wish we were doing planning, I wish we would update our application plan.
Well, actually, part of processing an application is being cognizant of what the master plan says, not just what the code says and this district allows, but recognizing the specific. I mean, you all act as if we're colorblind to an applicant. We are colorblind to the extent of it's, they could be our best friend or they could be our worst enemy, that's not important. But if the, if the proposed use is something that is advantageous for that site and that district and the community, that's important for us to consider versus something that is.
Of course it is.
Yes, but, but we all act sometimes as if it isn't. And many of the comments that we got last week were actually not just to the philanthropic and virtues of the applicant and, you know, the deliciousness of cupcakes. But actually, there were people who spoke to the fact that this is a vacant site, it's been vacant for a couple of years, that this is a use near the middle school that's very appropriate, unlike the previous use, which was very inappropriate in the middle school, which was a smoking establishment. This is a use that would probably bring a lot of middle schoolers down into the village. It begins to create sort of a critical mass of little eateries in that area. So, from a planning perspective, it is very desirable and the public made that heard and I hear that, and I think that that's important to consider.
And we noted that, and Kurt noted that, this is.
I'm not saying that you didn't, but you did at the beginning of this public hearing tonight indicate that all of the niceties that people said last week were irrelevant. And the fact of the matter is, I don't think they're entirely irrelevant. Because having a business owner who is producing a product that will attract young people in this community in an appropriate way, that will attract families, that will enhance a vacant property, those are valuable things that the planning board, I believe, as a planning board member, are charged to do. I mean, that is part of what we're supposed to do, is good planning. And when an application comes forward, I think about that and I think about the master plan in that context. I'm also cognizant of the code and reminded often about what it is, but I also believe that we do have discretion. Unlike the zoning board of appeals, as a quasi judicial judicial body, we have some degree of discretion about how we carry out what the code sets. The code is not the Ten Commandments, if you will, for those of you who agree. The code is written by a bunch of people with all of their flaws and it reflects their flaws. And we do the best we can, we change it as needed. And clearly, there are things that need changing here. But in the meantime, I feel like this applicant has become a dolphin in a tuna net in which we need to make a decision in order to go forward and we can't keep asking them to put money forward for things that I personally, unless the majority of the board feels that we should, I don't think we should ask them for any additional money.
They have not paid the arrears, Michael.
I understand that, and I'm not saying that they shouldn't pay it. And you keep coming back to that as if I have, I have never said that.
But that's why we are not taking action.
I didn't ask us to take action. What I asked us to do was, in order to make it palatable for them to go forward, to not ask them for $1,600 for, of which almost half of that is for costs not yet incurred. Because I, as one of five people, do not believe that we need, at this point in time, to ask them to incur those costs, because I don't think we need those consultants right now. And legitimately, they should pay what's in arrears. And legitimately, if you want to have a replenishment in there in the event that things come up, we could ask them for a reasonable amount to be decided. You said $500. I don't know what that number would be and I don't know that 500 is written anywhere, but.
One half of the initial deposit is what's required.
Thank you. Then that's a legitimate thing to ask them then.
So, that's $1,400.
But, but asking it of them with those definitions behind it, pay the money that you owe and pay to replenish this in the event that that money may be needed, is different from asking them for $700 in order to engage our consultants because you decided that we needed them to review this application, this latest version of the site plan, before we could then discuss it and go forward. And I just, I, I as one member of this planning board disagree with that. I don't think that we do need to engage them beforehand. I think we can talk about this application once the monies have been paid without incurring any, without engaging our consultants. And I've made a motion, it's been seconded, and I ask that we call it.
Would you restate the motion?
Yeah, I would say I seconded it, but I'd like to restate it.
The motion is that we, Kelly, do, did you get it or do I need to?
Most of it, but I'm gonna watch the video on this one.
Oh, fair enough. Well, then I can only paraphrase myself.
Well, say what you wanted to say.
So, the motion is. The motion is that we not engage our attorney or our engineer any further on this application until the planning board members have an opportunity to discuss the application with the applicant. And if during that discussion, it is determined that we need those consultants, at that point in time, we will then, you know, vote on engaging them. I'm not saying that.
I didn't hear anything about the escrow.
What do you mean you didn't hear anything?
I didn't hear you put in this motion anything about if they pay.
That's because I didn't, because I can't put in a motion that they pay.
Okay.
I, I understand that by this earlier decisions we've made and the discussions we've had and the code as it stands with respect to the escrow, that we're not going to review this application any further until they pay what they owe. And all I'm asking is that we not ask them to put money into the escrow for consultants engaged by the planning board until the planning board's had an opportunity to discuss the most recent version of the site plan by ourselves with the applicant.
Might I ask, is the motion really essentially, simply, that no further charges that have already been incurred be leveled before discussion begins? Is that what we're saying? No further professional charges or charges for professional services be incurred in this application before discussion of the merits of the application begin? Is that it?
Yeah, with the proviso that we're not going to be discussing this until the escrow account, the money.
Yeah, but I'm leaving that out. I mean, you're saying that, you know, that's.
Yes, that, that's fine, that's what I'm saying.
I see it slowing the process down, but.
I don't know how it's gonna slow the process down.
Because it's delaying legal and engineering review of the application.
Right, which, and I.
It's delaying it, which delays.
I deem, I'm deeming that, for me, right now at this point, that is not necessary.
You're not the planning board, I mean, we have to vote on this.
I know we have to vote on this, that's my whole point.
No, what I'm saying is, we have to vote on the application, which we can't do until the escrow is replenished.
That has nothing to do with my motion. Replenishing the escrow has nothing to do with my motion. Rich's point is, he's not, he feels that it's a delay because, if I understand you correctly, that you feel that we either do need the consultants at this point or we might need them in the future. And I'm not withholding the argument, the either that we might need them in the future. If you have anything now, then, then that's okay.
Show up and call when it comes to three years. Show them the call. You show them the call.
You still have to pay for that part of the note.
Pretty cheap compared to what a DOT review would have been. A lot cheaper.
Yeah.
Traffic study, down hole, you don't need it.
I agree.
A lot of things that we've required of other applicants, don't need it, don't need it, don't need it. My feeling is, if we had those two consultants sitting in front of us, we don't need more than a meeting. So, why have a meeting and discuss them, then bring it all to these consultants, review it all with them, then come back and meet with them? It seems redundant to me.
I've been operating under the idea that we wanted to expedite this application, which is why I agree to reduce the amount of escrow replenishment. And it's why the process is in place, to have these things reviewed in advance of the meeting at which we discussed products. So that we know what problems they see that we don't see, that we didn't see. And for whatever reason, that the building department didn't come up with the driveway that should have been closed, at least I think that's the case, is that right, Kurt?
Yes, going back to 1994.
Right. And I believe Dave did, or Rich did, I mean, this is why we have the meetings. This is why we have the reviews. And no one on this planning board wanted to delay this in any way. We would hope, I hoped, that this would have been done last month, finished, having cupcakes being made there. There have been surprises, the driveway. You know, there are things we didn't think were there. The first submission, nobody that I know saw anything about the drive-through until Joe met with Klausert and it came out in that conversation. They couldn't see that from the plan.
It was on hard copy, but it's not a, it's not a reasonable excuse, but I, listen.
Excuse me.
I have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded and I've called it, so.
And you're discussing it, Mike.
No, I've actually called the question. I've called the motion.
Kurt, on the paper?
Aye.
opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I do that with, might I say, Mr. Chairman, I do that with reluctance, but.
I've done everything here with reluctance.
Well, I'm only talking about the technicality of a motion right now. I'm not talking about having anything to do with the passions involved. Talking about the technicality of the motion. As I spoke with some passion before, I actually regret that. But we are now trying to do the business of the planning committee. I regret that we can't go forward with.
It's terrible.
With some discussion of the merits of the application.
All right, well, thank you for hearing my motion.
You're welcome. So, Mr. Ariel, if there is a way that we can get the escrow paid, replenishment paid as soon as possible so we can get this thing going, we're very eager to do that.
I understand, and let me just say, if I guess if you're getting a question, I'm the only one here from Moxie, I want to make it clear, as I think I have. First of all, any, any discussion that I've had with the board has been in my capacity as a minority owner, and I want to stress that. It's true, I am a minority owner, I can't change the facts of Moxie's case. Everybody knows the other position that I hold. And I've tried very, I have not given legal opinions here, and I want to make very clear, I have not given, my wife knows more about this code today than probably anybody sitting here and is perfectly capable of making these arguments herself enhanced. I know that she does not doubt that this board is generally in favor of her application. And what she is saying, however, is that it can't come from her perspective at any cost or at an open-ended cost. I'm not trying to reopen the conversation, I'm just telling her the position. And I will say, in my capacity as a owner and somebody who does, I can't deny, I know the code. The code does give the planning board, you may be right, Mr. Chairman, that the process for reviewing fees already incurred is something that has to happen as part of the meeting. But the code and the MOU both talk about the planning board having control over what escrow is to be set and what is to be required, the planning.
Mr. Ariel, with all due respect.
No, can I, can I?
You're, you're giving.
You've addressed me and I'm trying to respond to the question.
But I don't want legal interpretations from you. It's what it sounds like.
It's an argument that my wife has put on the record and one which she found entirely unwell. You've addressed me, I just want to comment on it. You do have the ability to impact a level of site plan review required and the level of escrow required. That has been my wife's point, it's material to her ability and willingness to go forward. I can't, she's the majority owner of the company. I can't, she's the majority owner of the company. Whether she's right, wrong, or indifferent on her point, I can't...
Mr. Ariel, I addressed you because you're the only one here on the application, and I, I wanted to express to you again that if we have the escrow replenished, as we've asked, we will proceed to process the application.
Mr. Chairman, also, we, on, on the application itself... On the application...
The code. The code.
Listen, I'm in, I, I, I won't speak to it anymore. I, I, you know, but you can't...
On the applications submitted, of course, we, when my office sought to first reach out to the owner to let him know his obligations that have not gone away, the phone number is, is Joe's. So when we called that number, to our surprise, we were speaking with Joe. So Joe is certainly representing the application.
Not representing the application. I am the owner of the company. I made the escrow. I, I still have to vote. Josie signed it. As I did the last time.
I'm sorry, Kirk.
That was it.
I, I didn't understand what you just said. You called who?
Well, we meant to call the owner. However, the phone number under the owner...
I said, okay.
No, the owner of the property. I'm sorry. Covington is the owner of the property, and we're calling to remind them and give them an opportunity before notice to remedy, to take care of this and discuss it.
Because Moxie has the right under its agreement with the owner to act as the representative of the owner with respect to the application. That's all. There's nothing more interesting about it than that.
No, there's nothing more interesting about it than that. However, we were, we were trying to get in touch with Covington to discuss their obligations. And I don't think that they've been participating in this process. My understanding is, they've asked Moxie to remove an, a large above-ground fuel tank that has been decommissioned for more than a decade. And of course, and I hope that the owner is not planning to ask Moxie to, to remediate the site if there's been fuel that's leaked, which has been no inspection. But when there is...
That doesn't look obvious.
Yes, I have, I'm...
Yeah, it doesn't look like that.
Ross, can you enforce it?
I know. I hope he did it. I'll be...
Well, I want to hear the owner's asking the applicant to remediate that. Right now, it's like...
What's the next item on the agenda, Mr. Chairman?
Next item on the agenda was, let's see, what we have here. First of all, the, the minutes that are on here.
Have been approved already, sorry.
Yes, and this is March fifth.
This is the discussion of the...
Yes, yes, I'll, I do have the, I just wanna make sure we have the minutes accurately correct. My, my notes are that we did approve at the last minute, at the last meeting...
March fifth.
The March fifth. Okay, so that is... Excuse me, I have to get some more. Please forgive me. But anybody outside to take a five-minute break?
Yes, I, I need to...
Let me take a five-minute break. So, there is a broader issue that I wanted to discuss tonight that I don't have the stomach to do tonight, so I'm not gonna discuss. It had to do with this process and so on, but I, I'm sick of it. But on the, on the agenda is the referral from the village board to discuss the zoning code changes that were delivered to us. I want our attorney to review that. I don't feel comfortable just us doing it, but I am putting it to you. I was told by George that he thinks it would take between two and three thousand dollars to do this, and we would have it by the next meeting. For context, I believe Mr. Ariel was paid ten thousand dollars to come up with this, and it took, I think, a year and a half. Could be wrong. And it involved something like five or six meetings with village board, ZBA, planning board members to, to go over, and it was, it, it looks to me like a hatchwork kind of thing, and I'm a little bit nervous about doing it. He, so anyhow, I, I wanted to get an idea what you all felt about how to proceed with this. We are, I'm not sure if we're legally required to make a recommendation to the village board. If we don't make one, less tax of approval. But I think, I would like to make a recommendation, and I would like to do it as informed as possible. And that's why I hired a good land use lawyer for the planning board. So, what do you all think about that? Should we spend the money to...
Well, we don't have the money to spend.
Well, we were told, I should say, Michael and I were told when we met with our mayor about a year ago at this time, that we had this two thousand dollars, and if we need more, we can get more. They'll just take it from another line. I'm not sure what that meant, but he assured us that if we need it, we'll have it. So, we won't... There have been other things that we've, that we've used him for that were outside of applications and over the... But anyhow, so I'm assuming that we have it. And as you probably know, the village law says that we're entitled to retain our, our experts and get the legal and other advice that we think we need. So, my question to you is, do you think we need this?
I'll tell you, my schedule needs it. I have so many hours to put into planning board, and I think the applicants come first. So, to put what remaining time I have into this document, which is extremely important, is gonna require some professional consulting to me.
Yeah. Mr. Rocco?
Well, if the money is available, and it can be done in a timely way, and that would assist the, the process of approval and development...
I'd like to interject for a moment. We have to have this done by the next meeting, right?
No, we have a little bit of time.
I think that's forty-five days.
I don't know if we have another meet, another regular meeting scheduled before the forty-five days, but I can...
I don't know what you're using as the start date, but I received it in an email on March eighth. It's when, when, when we got the version from the village attorney.
Okay, actually, I could be wrong. I may have been counting from when it was forwarded to me by the village clerk to be placed on the next planning board agenda. That actually, you're right, that the, perhaps the clock would only start when the planning board met and together was able to speak about it. That, that may be the case.
And that would buy us even more time. But even if it's March eighth, we have several day, almost, I think, five days past our next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just looking at the calendar.
So, assuming that that's the case, I'm sorry, Tom. If, if...
I, I, then, then I will, I, I would agree that we refer to counsel for advice, if you can get it to us in as timely way. I'm not sure that we could assume that there would be the money to pay him in advance of a consultation with the village trustees. So I don't know if we're making an empty gesture without, without knowledge about the money.
What, what we were told, Michael, maybe you...
I agree. I agree with you very much.
So what we were told was that if, if, if we need it, well, we, we, we have it. And I don't remember the exact words he used, but something like, we'll get it from another line, which I assume meant another budget line, and I don't, I don't know which one and how, whatever it was, that was it. So, Liz?
Yes, I think especially because of the importance of something that's gonna affect us long-term.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's, I would like to, I'd like, I agree with you that I think we should have our attorney do it. If we have the opportunity to formally tonight, let the village board know that we're gonna do this, that might be helpful, because I don't know when their next meeting is, but it's...
It's soon. It's wife's day.
April tenth, I think.
All right, so not, not tomorrow, but one week from today.
Yeah, which will be after he's done with it. Okay, but anyhow, I mean, I think, okay, I...
That would be great.
Well, I move both parties.
Yeah, just let him know that it's coming.
That's, that's...
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanna get there, but...
Okay, so, may I have, please, the merciful motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second, third.
We have an argument about who's gonna second.
That's Michael got there first.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Liz, you sure? I've been forcing you now. Oh, before I hit the gavel, some of you may know that our most, most esteemed and best secretary to the planning board that I have ever known or seen has tendered a letter of resignation to us. And I told her that I care more about her well-being and health than I do about the planning board. And for that, you may chastise me, but it's a hell of a thing for her to have to come here from Albany and go back there and be home at eleven or something like that, and then wind down. I mean, it only takes me about three hours to wind down for a meeting. Tonight, I might not. But, so, I wanna thank Ms. Stengel for her many hours of excellent service. You've done a great job, the best I've ever seen here.
Is this her next meeting?
No, she'll be here through May, the first one in May, right? Okay.
She'll come back. She loves these boards. She cares.
I'll send you DVDs. So I will now cast the final vote to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
You are the best people in this community. Thank you very, very, very much.